"To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all."
This, we're starting a workshop now. It's 1:32 PM in the afternoon, May 24th, 2017. And this is a workshop. To my left, we have county council. Commissioner Gold has something else she had to attend to. Myself, Commissioner Huxley. And to my right, Commissioner Boyce. This is a workshop that's presented by Judge Margolis. And he's going to introduce also Thomas Langford, who is the relatively new at this time, trial court administrator for the 15th Judicial District of Coos and Curry Counties. So Judge Margolis, thank you for coming. Thank you, Thomas. And you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'll make this an abbreviated presentation. I know that the county has quite a bit of business that it's trying to attend to at this time. So I appreciate the time that you've given me. The purpose of this presentation is to provide information to the commissioners and to the public regarding state courts. And I apologize if a lot of this material is material that's familiar to you, but I don't know what your level of knowledge about state courts is. So I'm providing fundamental information as well as some more in-depth information. At the end of my talk, I'll have some time for questions. And so we'll just get going.
Judge, also, if you want to move that to make it any easier for you, we can, we can...
It's portable.
Move that anywhere. So a lot of times, we'll have it over just so you don't have to be twisting around behind your back.
I can face everybody and see what I'm doing a little bit.
Great.
So the state of Oregon has a number of different courts, including circuit courts. We have a tax court. We have municipal courts, tribal courts, federal courts. The Circuit Court in Gold Beach is a state court. And every county in the state of Oregon has a circuit court. Our judicial district is a little bit unique in that it's made up of two counties, Coos and Curry Counties. So we have circuit courts in both counties. And in fact, Coos County has two locations with circuit court houses. But our judicial district is one district. I'm elected in both Coos and Curry Counties, as are the other five judges who serve in this judicial district. And all of us could potentially serve and/or help out in any of the other counties. In fact, I have helped out in some of our surrounding counties when they've needed some assistance. Curry County is part of the 15th Judicial District, which again is Coos and Curry Counties. Last I checked, there were 173 circuit court judges in the state. I don't believe that's changed, although there are referees as well who are not elected judges, but they serve the same type of function in juvenile court in places like Multnomah County, where they have judges or referees who do only juvenile law. This is a touchy mouse.
You're not the first one to discover that.
It slowed the speed down, too.
So when I make a decision or another judge makes a decision, our decisions are subject to appeal potentially. Cases from our courts, when they're appealed, go to the Court of Appeals in Salem. And then potentially from there to the State Supreme Court. Some cases are automatically appealed to the Supreme Court. A death penalty case would be an example of that. And you might say, "Well, that's interesting, but we don't have that sort of thing around here," which would be an incorrect statement. In fact, we do. It's been a while since there's been a death penalty case here, but there was one in the last 10 years. And that was a case that I handled that did go to the Supreme Court. That's now completely done with that process. As I said earlier, we have six judges in this county. Here are some statistics. I was going to update this. I'd given this presentation before, but Mr. Langford has updated statistics that he'll present later on. So these are the old ones, which are still interesting, I think. Many people don't understand the volume of business that we deal with in our courts or the type of cases that we deal with regularly. So again, these are old statistics. Mr. Langford will give you some newer statistics when he speaks a little bit later on. This gives you sort of an idea of the number of cases that we're seeing here. This is for Coos and Curry Counties back in 2014. This is pretty representative of the volume of cases that we do each year. At that time, I checked statistics for prior years, and it was pretty much in line with each of the prior years for a few years prior to that time. And I think if you look at the numbers that will be presented later on, they'll be similar in nature. We have a high volume of cases. And these are all cases that our courts are responsible for. But it doesn't mean that a judge necessarily touches every one of those cases. So for example, we have in this slide 2,903 criminal or other law violation cases. That could include some traffic cases that are dealt with just through the clerk's office. Many cases are resolved by negotiations between the parties. We might see those, but those hearings are relatively brief in nature. And then a few of those cases go to trial. Some of them are jury trials. Some are bench trials. We have jury trial session every month here. First two weeks or so of each month, we schedule jury trials during that time. I think in this last session, we had probably six or seven days in jury trial, where trials were actually going. One of those cases was a lengthy trial involving some burglaries. We also handle civil cases, probate, mental health cases, meaning civil commitment cases, although mental health issues can come up in other types of proceedings as well. Divorces, child custody, parenting time support cases. Yes?
Do you prefer, if we have a question, we wait or that we ask you while you're talking about the topic?
You can ask a question during my presentation if you'd like.
Just to do the quick math, because if you take, which I just did, 4,140 cases, you divide it by about 180 workdays. And that's about 23 cases a day. I'm just saying, that's a big, that's a big... However you divide it, it's a big number.
It is a big number. As I said, you can have one case that could literally take six weeks, eight weeks of a judge's time. And I could deal with 100 other cases in a day. So the number of cases isn't necessarily a good representation of the volume of work that a judge has. It might be a better representation of the volume of work for the clerks in the clerk's office, because they really do have to process all of those cases. Some cases, from my perspective, are really very complicated. And others, it's a matter of a quick review and a signature, especially cases that are resolved or where somebody's entered a guilty plea to a relatively minor traffic offense. Thomas or Mr. Langford can probably give you more information about how the volume of work that we do impacts the court staff. He's a court administrator. I am not. The function that I have is really separate from the function that he has. So here are some of our past judges. I know Court Boyce knows both of these judges because he's been around here for a long time. They've both retired. These are judges who worked here during the first 15 years or so that I was working as a lawyer in this area.
Shoot, I go back to... Your Honor, I go back to Sam Hall. And it wasn't a pleasant... No, it wasn't a very pleasant time, actually. Yeah. Sam was from Brooklyn.
So there's Sam Hall, who Court Boyce is referring to. And Fred Starkweather. Who actually, I believe Judge Starkweather was... Oh, it was Judge Hall, who was a district court judge. We used to have a district court and a circuit court. In 1998, the courts in the state of Oregon were consolidated, so they all became circuit courts. It used to be that district courts handled misdemeanors and the lower dollar civil cases. And then the circuit court handled the felony cases and the bigger civil cases. But that was changed. This is Judge Lickdig, who was appointed as a circuit court judge. He's from Langmoys. And he served for about a year. He was killed in a motorcycle accident. And he was well-liked and was running unopposed at the time that he was killed. That's myself. The smallest pictures of me. I'm not photogenic. So I did that on purpose. And Judge Beaman were the two serving judges here in Curry County, although we do travel to Coos County fairly regularly to fill in. It's a little bit sporadic, but we are up there on occasion. In Coos County, we currently have Judge Barron, who is presiding judge, longest serving presiding judge in the state of Oregon and third in seniority now, or second? Second in terms of the length of his career. Megan Jaco, on the other hand, is one of the most recent additions to the state court bench. And she just took over the position of Judge Gillespie, who retired recently. Paula Beckhold is a judge who's been on the bench for quite a long time now as well. And Judge Stone has been on the bench, I think, for about 15 years. Maybe a little bit longer now. So these are all judges who you would vote for as well and who serve you in your judicial district. Circuit courts are a court of general jurisdiction. So we handle, we're a trial-level court. We handle just about everything other than tax law. And we're not a federal court, so we don't deal with federal cases. But any case that can come in front of a trial court in Oregon can come to a circuit court. Some municipalities have courts which can handle a range of cases as well. We have municipal courts in our county, but they don't handle criminal cases. They only handle municipal violations and traffic violations. The municipal court cases can be appealed to the circuit court, which is our court. That rarely happens, but it can happen. So we deal with, if somebody needs to have a divorce or property issues, neighbor disputes, personal injury cases, wrongful death cases, commitment of mentally ill people or civil commitment cases. They might not be committed if the state's not able to establish that they should be. Injunctions. Everything that you can imagine in relation to civil cases, we do. And we deal with all of those types of cases on a regular basis. And we deal with criminal cases. We do that every day. I think I had about one, over 20 cases on Monday morning. This morning, it was 18 cases. That varies. I've had as many as 40 on my nine o'clock docket. Sometimes it's only one or two, but it's an everyday occurrence. And we have cases, everything that you can imagine, driving under the influence, assaults are a pretty normal thing, burglary, identity theft, possession of drugs. Methamphetamine and heroin possession are regular occurring offenses in our area. Heroin is one that's come up or made a comeback in the recent past and seems to be something that we're seeing much more frequently. When I came here about 25 years ago, I think I saw one case of heroin possession in the first five years or so that I was here. Right now, I think it's every week, at least. Methamphetamine or heroin, one or the other, certainly every week.
Judge Margolis?
Yes.
Yeah, just some stats on that. The heroin is cheaper now than it has been, which seems to be some of the basis for the rise. But it's $100 a day habit. And that, as you know, results into what you're dealing with, what the district attorney and the sheriff's department's dealing with is, you have property crimes to beat that habit.
So there does seem to be a very strong correlation. We have what appears to be an uptick in burglaries, identity theft cases, shoplifting, car clouts, unauthorized use of motor vehicle, which is stealing cars, basically. There seems to be an increase in those sorts of cases. And they seem to be correlated with methamphetamine use and heroin use. And... So I'd say you're right.
The stats are good. It's about 50/50 between where meth was just a matter of a year ago was substantially ahead the drug of choice, for lack of a better term. I think that's pretty accurate.
So the way this, I mean, obviously impacts the health of a person who's using these substances, but it affects our communities because we're all at a little bit greater risk for being victimized. And, you know, there's a cost to society for these addiction problems, certainly, that we're seeing. Also, in dealing with criminal justice, law enforcement side, jail treatment, all of that, it's hard to keep up with.
Well said. Thank you.
We'll talk a little bit about sentencing in criminal cases. There are two types of cases generally, felony and misdemeanor. That doesn't mean a whole lot. And misdemeanor is a crime punishable by a year in jail. Felony is a crime punishable by more than a year in jail. In reality, we have sentencing guidelines in Oregon applicable to felony sentencing, but not applicable to misdemeanor sentencing. So a Class A misdemeanor, for instance, like typically driving under the influence or assault in the fourth degree, a person could actually be sentenced to a year in jail, limited to six months by statute. So six months. Possession of methamphetamine or heroin, depending on, well, it doesn't even depend on the gridlock. It might depend on the volume of the drugs or if there are other offenses. But if it's just that possession charge, the limit is 10 days, even though it's a felony because of the sentencing guidelines. And the court doesn't have a whole lot of discretion. We can go up to 30 days if we can make a special finding that there's space available in the jail. And there should be some evidence to support that. Otherwise, we have that 10-day limit. It's not uncommon for people to be forced released, even pre-trial. And I'll talk a little bit about that later on. So when it comes to sentencing, the court doesn't have free rein to do whatever it thinks is appropriate. There are statutory limitations on sentencing, constitutional limitations on sentencing, and resource limitations on sentencing. We don't want to, I don't want to impose sentences that can't be enforced. So I don't want to sentence somebody to jail when I know they're going to be processed at the jail and then go right out the back door again because it weakens the credibility of our system, if I am in the position of doing that. I think teaches a bad lesson to that particular offender and anybody else who might be paying attention. Probation is a typical way to deal with somebody who's convicted of a crime. Probation terms are limited by statute as well. And we have standard conditions of probation that are statutory standard conditions. But we have some discretion in imposing additional conditions of probation, although that discretion is limited to a certain degree. But in a reasonable way in that the added conditions of probation have to be tied to the offense in a logical way. So you have to, if you're adding some special condition, it has to relate to the offense that a person is convicted of. So we have probation, as I said. We don't have a whole lot of other options here in our county. We don't have a community service program that's really functional. We've made some attempt to get that going again. We used to years ago. And that was, in my view, a good option for many offenders. A good example is a person who's been convicted of driving under the influence for the first time. Under Oregon law, that person faces a minimum sentence of either 48 hours in jail or 80 hours of community service. In our county, that means it's jail because we don't have a community service program. So we don't have that option. I think virtually all other counties do have a community service program that runs and allows the court to impose that as opposed to jail time.
Who, so the community service program is not run by the state court? It is a county program? Is that what you mean?
Sheriff's Office typically runs it. When you have a community, state courts don't run. We're not probation officers. Sheriff's Offices have probation departments. So that's how it works. I think there might be some municipalities that could do that and have the resources to do it as well. But if you're looking at a county-wide program that would be useful for state courts rather than some municipal court, it's going to be a county function to do that.
And that would be within the parole and probation department typically of the counties?
Typically.
Okay.
So I've worked with the sheriff's office here. And we've, again, we used to have a program running. We have sort of a tentative program going now. But I think, I don't know why, other than perhaps lack of resources. Really, it takes somebody to monitor somebody who's been given community service hours. The reason for that is if I order community service and there's nobody out there to take care of that, to direct somebody to go somewhere, to make sure they're doing their hours, to check in with whoever it is they're doing those hours with, most of the offenders who have that sense of community service just aren't going to do it. Even when you do have somebody monitoring, it can be like pulling teeth to get somebody to get that process done. Some people are great. So the current plan that we have is that only when defense counsel and the prosecutor agree that somebody's really suitable and presumably the sheriff's office agrees. In other words, it's somebody who's pretty much a self-starter that doesn't have to be monitored so much. It's only in those instances where we're doing community service. Otherwise, we don't really have a functioning program to allow that to occur. Which I think is, you know, really reduces our options. Community service can be better for the community. It can be better for the offender. And if I'm left with jail and community service versus just jail as an option, it really, as you can imagine, limits what I can do. There are many first-time offenders who really shouldn't go to jail. But there should be some kind of sanction imposed. You hear about judges using really creative ideas, like, you know, wearing a sign that announces what he did and standing on the side of the road, you know, things like that. I've never done anything like that. I don't know that there's, you know, any evidence-based practice that would support using those sorts of sanctions. And so I don't do that sort of thing generally, at all, really. Often, the court does not have much discretion because sentencing guidelines limit our discretion. Traffic violations. We do deal with traffic violations in circuit court. So speeding tickets, that sort of thing. The legislature has set the minimum, maximum, and presumptive fine amounts. We don't have fix-it tickets anymore. That's been removed from... So if somebody comes into court with the taillight being out, unless the officer involved wants to dismiss because they fixed it, we don't really have that discretion anymore. That's been taken away from us. Resource limitations, as I've discussed, are a concern in juvenile and criminal court. The more programs that we have and the more options we have for sentencing and creative sentencing with evidence-based practices, the better. Use of jail right now for us is, for criminal law, it is really the only option that we have. We can incarcerate somebody and we can impose fines. Fines are often just not paid. They go to collections. We used to, in circuit court, pursue, in criminal cases, the collection of money from people who are on probation. But that doesn't occur in the state anymore in terms of individual courts pursuing that money. Those go to collections. So we generally don't have payment plans. If somebody doesn't pay within 30 days, the money goes to collections. Or not the money, but the collection of that money goes to collections. And that's happening statewide. So the fines, while of some impact for some people, for many people, it really doesn't make any difference if I order a fine. The lack of jail space. We've had a little bit of an issue with this lately because of our jail beds being cut down. A couple of things happen that are very apparent and really obviously associated with reduced number of jail beds. We've had forced releases. So somebody who's arrested, rather than coming into court to be arraigned and advised of their right to counsel, right to remain silent, and going through that first appearance and then being placed on a conditional release or having security set by the court. They're sometimes kicked loose by the jail and directed to come back to court. Well, they often don't come back to court, which leads to work having to be done if the state wants to prosecute a criminal charge. They have to file a motion and affidavit requesting a warrant. Then the officers have to go serve that warrant. Often, that results in a warrant being served with a person being cited to appear and released again. And maybe we keep going through that. Sometimes they're picked up somewhere else and brought back here, but then they might be released again. So the fail-to-apPEAR numbers are rising really dramatically, which slows down the process and creates more work to process these cases and more court appearances. There's a decrease in accountability. If people know that either they're not going to jail for stealing or for possessing heroin or methamphetamine, they don't worry about that so much. And so it doesn't have as much of a deterrent effect. Or if they know that when they're sentenced, they're going to walk right back out the door. Again, we don't have that deterrent effect. So there's a decrease in accountability when you don't have the jail space to use. This has been more of a problem in other areas and less of a problem here until more recently. We, I think we had adequate space and we're using it pretty well and pretty effectively. And I think the jail sheriff, they've been working, trying to alleviate the problems that they have with the lack of jail space as much as they can. They're doing an admirable job in that regard, in my opinion. There's a decrease in the ability to prosecute a case. Evidence can become stale. If somebody disappears because they were forced released or because they've been released because we don't have jail space, and then we don't catch up to them for a long time, maybe the witnesses in the case are no longer around or maybe they don't remember what happened. Time causes evidence in some instances to be less reliable, so that state's ability to prosecute that case decreases with time. And not having jail as a potential sanction or even as a holding place for somebody who's awaiting trial lessens the credibility of our justice system. So it's an important thing. It's an important tool to have. Another instance where it can be important is, you know, we have people occasionally who are unruly and to an extent that you probably don't see in commissioner meetings, although I don't know because I don't attend your meetings.
It's on video, Judge.
Well, so, you know, you could have things like death threats from people who actually might be willing to carry those out, that sort of thing. We need to be able to have security in the courtroom. And judges have the ability to impose summary contempt. It's sparingly used, as it should be, but we need to be able to maintain some control. We need to be able to have law enforcement available and jail space available for the rare events where we need to use that so that we can maintain control rare events where we need to use that so that we can maintain control in a setting where it's not uncommon to have people who are methamphetamine users or heroin users who maybe are having their best day, or somebody who's having a domestic relation issue where they're very upset and volatile. There are situations that thankfully, usually they're more settled down when they're in court than when law enforcement deals with them in the field, but we have situations where people are just having a bad day and bad things can happen, and we need to be able to maintain some control in the courtroom and decorum, too. Talk a little bit about search and seizure, I'll keep this brief. I have this as a topic in this presentation only because it's interesting to some people. You hear about evidence being suppressed in cases, and people wonder, well, why does that happen? In some cases, it's difficult for folks to understand why evidence might be suppressed. But we have both constitutional and statutory provisions that are designed to protect the people from government intrusion that's unreasonable, and so people are supposed to be free from searches, unreasonable searches, unless they're supported by a warrant or an exception to the warrant requirement. And so that's generally-
Five, I think.
What's that?
I think it's amendment five.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The Bill of Rights, it's amendment number five, I think.
Actually, there's different constitutional provisions that could be applicable. So that's what the hearings on suppression are about, generally, and the court has to make decisions about whether a search is a valid search based upon the facts and the law that applies. And those are the, one of the types of decisions that are appealed the most frequently. It's a constantly changing area of law, it's fairly complex, and you can make a decision one day and then the next day, a decision comes out from the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court that modifies the law to some degree, or clarifies the law, so that you really have to stay on your toes in that area. Yes.
Is that frequently encountered from your cases? As far as challenges to-
So-
The defendants, I guess.
Okay, so, search and seizure issues come up regularly. It's a very normal part of criminal law and criminal law cases. In a case where drugs are found, or where a weapon from a crime scene is found, or where somebody makes statements to law enforcement, one of the first things that the defense attorney is going to do is to evaluate the case, to look at whether or not there is any type of constitutional provision or protection that's been violated by the police, and then they will, the next step is, claim that any evidence arising from that incident should be suppressed or kept out of trial. So we have hearings regularly on motions to suppress, and then those are, the decisions from those hearings are of a type that are frequently appealed. So maybe you have a motion to suppress, you have a hearing, evidence is or is not suppressed, somebody after trial decide, either side might decide to appeal, and then the Court of Appeals will make a decision. And then somebody might not like the decision from the Court of Appeals, and they might appeal to the Supreme Court of the state. In fact, one of my decisions, which was affirmed at the Court of Appeals, is at the Supreme Court for review on a search right now, or two, maybe. I don't know what's going on. I don't keep track of the notices of appeal that are filed in my case, I don't see them. I do read advance sheets, so when there are published opinions, I read those. Many cases are affirmed without opinions, so maybe there's, there are briefs filed in the Court of Appeals, oral argument, and the Court of Appeals makes a decision, and then they just issue a notice that it's been affirmed without opinions. But they do write a lot of opinions, our Court of Appeals is very busy. The court is obviously, or it should be obvious, we're bound to follow the law, swear it up, hold the Constitution, and we're bound to follow appellate law as well. I couldn't decide, for instance, that I think the Court of Appeals is wrong, so I'm going to make a different decision. It's not permissible for me to do that, and I would never do that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. You had earlier, you said there's about 2,000 criminal cases that you could see in your business district.
Sorry, pardon me, Mr. Chair and Your Honor. Mr. Barnes, I think you're going to have to get on a microphone if you're going to ask your question.
How about right here?
There you go.
And identify.
My name is David Barnes. I'm just, you mentioned that these suppression hearings are a regular thing. What percentage of the cases that you hear actually has somebody who files one of these that is successful and the evidence is suppressed?
I don't have a percentage, so-
If you had to pick one, just the-
If I had to make something up?
Yeah, if you had a five percent, one percent-
It's low, but, so I'm going to qualify by saying, there was a number that showed back in 2014, the number of criminal cases, or criminal and violation filings. As I said earlier, that's not representative of the number of cases that I touch or see in court. So many of those could be traffic violations that the traffic clerk and the state court office deals with. In terms of the actual criminal cases, we probably, I think there are motions to suppress filed every month. There are hearings, it's sporadic, but there might be omnibus hearings or hearings on motion to suppress. Some months, there might be three or four here in Curry County, other months, there might be none or one.
Oh, okay.
And then, in terms of how often is the defense successful, I don't know. It's not super uncommon for maybe some evidence to be suppressed and some not to be suppressed. It's probably more common for those defense motions to fail. Not probably, it is more common for those motions to fail. And on occasion, they're appealed, they're generally, the decisions from the trial court are generally affirmed, but occasionally, there's a reversal.
Okay.
I would, I've been on the bench for about ten years. I would venture a guess that I've had in ten years, my decisions on search and seizure have been reversed fewer than five times, if I had to guess. You could look it up easily because it's public record.
I'll just, you know, what it says to me is that we don't have law enforcement officers out there stomping all over people's rights that are then getting thrown out of court because the police weren't, the police did something wrong and something got thrown out. So you tell, what I'm hearing is that the cops are doing their job the right way.
I'm not going to comment on that. I make decisions on the cases that are in front of me. I would say that not every issue that could be litigated is litigated.
Okay. All right, I'm just, like I said, it's what I take away from it, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Quick question, just going back, you said that your ability to have discretion is, was eliminated, is that from the state, Judge?
So I have discretion in certain areas. Discretion is limited and has, over time, for state court judges, been limited more and more. There are examples in criminal law that are readily apparent and easily available for anybody to look at. So the sentencing guidelines, which are not really guidelines, are a good example. In felony cases, a person's sentence is dictated by the sentencing guidelines, and they're complicated, but a very simple way to look at it is a personal, has a, a person would have a criminal history score and then a crime seriousness level, and there's a grid block using that crime seriousness level and criminal history score, and a person falls somewhere on the grid block based upon those two things, and then the presumptive sentence is in that grid block along with the parameters that a person that could be sentenced to within a certain range. There can be departure sentences upward or downward, the law in that area is complicated as well. I did impose a departure sentence last week on a burglary case where I did an upward departure because, well, the factors were set forth on the record, but that doesn't happen that often. That person ended up with a seventy-two-month sentence in the state penitentiary, but that's unusual.
Okay, thank you.
And that actually was the upper limit of the sentence that could be imposed. My discretion was limited to that. The state did ask for 144 months, but I, it was my opinion that I was limited because of sentencing guidelines and applicable case law to 72 months. Grand jury proceedings, I think we're going to skip over this just in the interest of time. This has been a topic that's been of interest to many people in the recent past. State courts have some involvement with grand jury proceedings, but I don't sit through them, I actually couldn't. So the clerk's office deals with calling in the grand jurors, a judge will swear in the grand jurors and then, and provide some introduction to them, and then we exit stage left, and the district attorney's office handles those proceedings. They're secret proceedings. There's been some, there have been some moves lately to create a system under which grand jury proceedings would be recorded, and there's been some talk of having state courts be responsible for that, or potentially some other entity. I think Mr. Langford might know more about that. We don't have to do it yet, so I haven't concerned myself with it too much. Judges, by the way, are, they tend to not be politically active people, and there are limitations on what we can do in terms of advocating for any kind of policy, so I steer clear of that.
How long, if you are chosen, I mean, this is not about, this is more, you're chosen or you volunteer, and if, whatever the case may be, how long are you typically on a grand jury if you become a member of that jury?
Well, I could tell you more about our jury service for regular jurors, which tends to be about two weeks every two years. I think the grand jury service could be longer, but I don't know.
Okay.
I've been on, I've had jury duty, but I haven't had grand jury duty. Mr. Langford might be able to answer that, perhaps?
I believe it's thirty minutes.
Okay. That's, I thought it was a little bit longer, but not too much longer. The grand jurors might have, well, they're typically going to have more work to do than jurors. If you're called as, if you have jury duty, you have to check in, your number's going to be chosen randomly, perhaps, or it might not be. So many people who have jury duty end up never actually having to come into the courthouse, they just have to check in. Other people get stuck on juries, sometimes for long periods of time. Last summer, we had one trial that was six weeks, that actually didn't finish at all. We do tend to get our business done pretty rapidly, so our trials are typically between one and three days. A juror can serve more than once during a term, too. Mental health issues, this is also a topic of great interest. We deal with mental health issues in every arena that we have in court. Where it comes up most significantly is in civil commitment cases and in criminal proceedings. Civil commitment is a civil type of proceeding where a person who is alleged to be mentally ill is facing commitment for a time period of up to six months. That commitment would be based on a hearing or trial where the, if the state can prove that that person meets the criteria for civil commitment, including being, suffering from mental illness and being a danger to themselves or others, that person can be committed. That area of law is not as simple as it sounds either. There's quite a bit of case law on that topic, which changes somewhat regularly. Maybe it's not super regularly, but you really have to dot your i's and cross your t's in those proceedings to make sure that they're fair, that a person who's facing commitment is given due process, is advised of their rights, and that they really meet the criteria under the law, which is not just found in the statute, but it's found in the case law. So many people who are obviously mentally ill are not committable because they don't meet the criteria of being dangerous to themselves sufficiently, or not dangerous to another person. One of the things that impacts those hearings is that while in the, out in the street, wandering in traffic, the person might be a danger to themselves or others, the standard is applicable at the time of the hearing, so maybe they've settled down three or four days later and they're no longer a danger to themselves. The state actually has to prove that at the time of the hearing, not just what happened three or four or five days ago. Criminal proceedings, it comes up in terms of ability to aid and assist. In other words, a person who's facing a crime has to be able to communicate with their lawyer and assist in their own defense, have some ability to understand the nature of the proceedings and be able to make some sort of decisions in their case. And so that's what aid and ability to assist is about. And then it can also relate to a defense, potentially, although mental health defenses are considered to be a partial defense, not a complete defense in Oregon. So a person who is guilty but insane is still facing being locked up, it's just that they would be locked up in a different type of facility and hopefully getting treatment. And we've had quite a few of those cases. There's one that's memorable to me in Port Orford where a person was starting fires on, in buildings and, and there are some other folks who've been fairly dangerous who've ended up in the state hospital for a fairly lengthy period of time. There have been some deaths related to mental illness around here where the person suffering from the mental illness is now in the state hospital. This is another area where our available resources impacts what we're able to do. There's some relatively new legislation statewide that allows for a disposition somewhat short of a commitment to the state hospital, which is, for some folks, probably a good thing, but it requires a local treatment facility, which we don't have, so our county doesn't have the ability to do that. While I'm, I'll go back to mental health just for a minute. So I think from a law enforcement perspective, the folks that are dealing with people who are mentally ill out in the field are frustrated because there's not a good answer for helping these folks, or helping the people who are dealing with the consequences of having interactions with a mentally ill person. It might be a store owner or business owner who has somebody who's mentally ill doing bad stuff in their place of business or scaring customers away. It might be somebody who hits the person wandering in traffic. It might be somebody who has a child who's walking to the park who has an unfortunate encounter with somebody, and law enforcement has to deal with these folks. And the jail, I think, is frustrated as well because, you know, these people need treatment, the jail isn't really the best facility, the hospital's been back and forth on whether they'll have a holdroom or not. We don't have any kind of facility where we can house people who are mentally ill other than the jail or sometimes the hospital. And criminal law is generally not an effective way to deal with these problems because they're often what are called nuisance crimes that these people are committing. So if it's a criminal mischief or harassment or, you know, breaking someone's window or whatever it is, there might be a short stay in jail which alleviates the problem for the people outside the jail, at least for a few days, but when that person is out, they still have the same mental illness and they're still just as volatile and still having the same issues that the community then has to deal with. So this has been an ongoing and frustrating problem in our community and I think in communities across the whole nation. We do have less, fewer resources here, so it's perhaps a greater problem for us. Victims in Oregon have constitutional rights. They have a right to be notified about certain events that are going on in the criminal cases in which they are victims. They have a right to a meaningful role in proceeding- They have a right to a meaningful role in proceedings. They have a, a right to be treated with dignity and respect. They have these constitutional rights that the court also is looking out for as we go through these criminal proceedings. So for example, I generally expect to hear from the state before sentencing that they've talked to the victim and they know the victim's position and whether or not the victim wants to be present for sentencing. That's an example of how a victim's rights might be protected. The district attorney's office has traditionally had a person who assists with victims' rights. I think that's grant funded. Not that it's my business, but they do have somebody who does that. Why does all of this matter to you or to everybody else? I would say that most of us are fortunate enough to be able to go through our lives for the most part without having to go to court or deal with the court system, except maybe as jurors. It's something that's behind a curtain that we never pass and we don't hear about it, we don't think about it, and it doesn't have an apparent impact on our lives. But really, most of the disputes, or many of the disputes in our society are dealt with by our courts. And even if they're not, the fact that our courts are there and have the ability to resolve these disputes can help inspire people to reach agreements, to resolve their own disputes rather than going to court. So, while the courts are not very apparent in our everyday lives, the courts are extraordinarily important to the functioning of our society, our ability to do business, our ability to relate with people in many ways. And people really do rely on our courts more than most of us imagine or realize. Even if you get a traffic ticket, you want to know that you've got a court that you can go to, to contest your citation or to talk to about what the appropriate sanction should be. Even if it's just something like that, it's important to have a, a good functioning court to, to be able to hear those sorts of issues. I think that's about it.
Do you, you mentioned the court, do you get much into, I didn't know whether you, it, it might be something further down, but into the small claims court, how much of that do you handle or does Judge Beeman handle?
That's a very good question. Again, we're a court of general jurisdiction, so on the civil side, we do handle small claims cases, all the way up to the biggest civil lawsuits that you can imagine. We do those and everything in between. So, you know, big personal injury cases or big property disputes, we do those as well as small claims. So, I could be doing a small claims case one minute and a death penalty case the next minute. We do everything. And on the criminal side, we do violations, criminal cases, you know, all, everything, everything in between.
So you don't collect or, that you have a whole group of small claims or, I don't know how many, or even?
Okay, so we run dockets each day and we have multiple dockets. We have two courtrooms. So typically at eight-thirty, I might hear some small claims, arrange some criminal defendants, deal with restraining orders, maybe some motions, eviction cases. So between eight-thirty and nine, I'm doing that. Sometimes those go over. And then at nine o'clock, we start a criminal docket where we do pleas and sentencings and some motion hearings. On Mondays, we do juvenile law where we, Monday afternoons, we have a docket for our juvenile delinquency cases and then another docket a little bit later for our juvenile dependency, dependency cases. Tomorrow, we have a docket that's primarily filled with child support contempt cases that the Department of Justice is prosecuting, so they'll have an attorney here for those starting at nine-thirty. On non-jury trial days, we have civil trials that are bench trial set or criminal or contempt bench trial set. And then during jury trial terms, we have usually between two and four jury trials scheduled per day that could be criminal or civil jury trials. They're mostly criminal and the ones that go are mostly criminal. Out of those, many of them resolved before trial, but we still usually have at least a couple of jury trials every month and sometimes more than that. So we have a very varied docket and because of the requirement, the time requirements in all of these types of proceedings, we can't set, say our, our eviction case is just on the first Monday of each month because if an FUD is filed, we have to have a hearing within a certain period of time and then a, a trial within a certain period of time. If a restraining order is filed next thing, next morning at eight-thirty AM, we're hearing that restraining order. And then a hearing, if there are child, children involved, is gonna happen within five days if somebody will have a request, if someone wants one. A preliminary hearing in a criminal case has to happen within five days if the person doesn't waive it or within 30 days. I could just go on and on and on. It's, there are time limitations for virtually everything that we do. All of our cases, we're supposed to get done within a year of the time they're filed. That's another limitation that we have. Judges are supposed to make decisions on pending motions within 30 or 60 days. I'm usually within less than a week. Thank you. You're welcome. So I can take other questions from anybody. I do have some restrictions which are listed here. Yes?
I had a question, Your Honor, and I wasn't sure if you already covered this and I'm not sure if it's a question for you or Mr. Langford. You mentioned the statistics on filing in one of your initial slides. Did that, and then also it seemed like you got into a discussion with Commissioner Boyce on heroin has become more prevalent. Did the statistical slide on the number of filings indicate a year-over-year increase? In other words, are the filings for the court increasing or is the volume going up? Are you tracking that? Is the, then is the demand for, you know, an additional judge or is something else, is that being tracked or?
So, on a statewide level, it's all being, there are a lot of things being tracked. I don't have the numbers for heroin cases or methamphetamine cases specifically. We do pull statistics regularly. We're also looking at statistics in juvenile cases for timed disposition, particularly in dependency cases where the time that a child is outside the home or else in foster care is really important. We're looking at those statistics regularly. Do I know all of those numbers off the top of my head? I don't.
No? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir. You know, I think you'll need to really speak up or come up to the microphone. I don't mind if you stand.
That's, that's okay. You mentioned before about sentencing and jail beds and space available in jail. And it led into a conversation about the credibility of the courts and everything and you're not, your resistance or reluctance to sentence somebody when you know they're just gonna be kicked out because there's no space for them over there. That's an issue that probably is, is, if you had more beds, what I'm getting at, if there was more jail space available to you, it would impact the way that you look at people and it's, you know where I'm going with this?
Not exactly.
Um, okay, we've lost beds due to funding, okay? The sheriff's department funding has caused the jail to get smaller and smaller over the years. And what I'm getting at is by that limitation on beds, that, that presents, that's something that you consider in your sentencing decisions is what's going to happen to the person after you, after you pass sentence on them?
I definitely take jail space into consideration. In fact, with sentencing guidelines cases, it is required that the court take that into consideration. Do I look at people differently? No.
Right, no. But it's, so you do make decisions, just, that you have to make decisions just based on, on jail space availability?
Yes.
Okay, so if there was more money, it would, more money for more beds, it would be, you would still make the same decisions, but it would be, you would have more options available to you?
So I'm not going to talk about money or, or policy.
Do you have that on a T-shirt by chance?
Other than, other than, I, I don't. Other than to say I consider jail space in sentencing and I can talk a little bit about my perspective in relation to the impact of reduction of jail beds in, in sentencing and in criminal cases that fail to appear rate. Why we have reduced jail space or how to increase jail space is not my business.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Your Honor, yes. It's not unlike the, what our district attorney is dealing with. Sometimes his people, he and his staff have to make very difficult decisions, as you have outlined, that you have to do based on which, which crimes he wants to try and pursue because of, of the budget part of it and the, and the jail. And I'm not trying to draw you into conversation here, but I, I just really appreciate what you're up against and what the district attorney's up against, what we're all up against. And you also referenced that the greater risk for the public and we're seeing that more and more and I, I just also appreciate that you're aware of that and what, what it means for our culture, even though you did, you, you did reference it. We're generally not gonna go through the court system at some point, but as there is the, the, the level of breakdown, starting to, to, to rise a little bit, as, as best we can track that back to the state, it's, it's really interesting and it's, it's, it's kind of a fascinating time and, and I, I don't envy you.
So, thank you. Sentin, in sentencing, a primary consideration is public safety, protecting the public. Another is appropriate punishment. And under the sentencing guidelines, those are the two primary purposes of sentencing. So I certainly can talk about and consider those things in relation to my work without, I think, crossing the border into policy, which I do my best to steer clear of. And I am appreciative of the fact that other people do that work.
That's a tough topic.
And that I don't.
I like Dave Barnes' idea on the, on the T-shirt, though. There might have some real potential there.
We don't wear T-shirts in my courtroom, except for under the.
Well, no, I, I just, I didn't say you in particular, but that was a, yeah.
Are there any other questions before Mr. Langford provides or presents?
Thank you very, very much, Joe.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to take a little bit of your time. I know that you're extraordinarily busy, particularly at this moment. I'm, I'm happy to present again at some point if you'd like to. I think that education of the public and of our policymakers is really important and it's important that we try to work together to try to provide the best service to the public that we can. So thank you very much.
At least every year. Thank you. Very beneficial.
Mr. Langford?
Thank you, sir.
Have you got your own T-shirt?
I'm trying to find a good place to get it.
Do you have your own slogan? Because you need a slogan for a T-shirt, I think.
Don't make too much noise. So thank you guys again for having, both the judge and I. Before I kind of get into this, I want to get into some of the weeds a little bit and maybe hit on a couple of things that the judge briefly mentioned. I come from the state of Ohio by means and ways of the state of Michigan. So some of the unique challenges that face southern Oregon are also prevalent in those areas as well. In the state of Ohio, I was on a thorough fare between I-75, which is, if anyone's familiar, runs all the way down to Florida and all the way up to Detroit, Michigan, and I-71, which runs into Kentucky and over and all the way up into Columbus and into Cleveland and towards Detroit. So we had a large heroin problem. We had over, we had overdoses and deaths every single day for the court, so we dealt with that on an ongoing and continual basis. Hopefully, that problem doesn't rear its head and continue to rear its head here, but unfortunately individuals make decisions and as a court and as a community, we'll have to deal with those consequences as they arise and overcome those unique challenges that are gonna be facing us in the coming months and years ahead of us. And we'll just have to wait and kind of see what happens and then make plans as they occur. In terms of the grand jury information and that potentially changing, there are two bills that have come out of committee that are currently on the floor that would take grand jury and put grand jury either in state court's hands to record and to have audio recordings of it, or would put it in the DA's hands to record. Those could fail. Those could not fail. So right now, it's a little too early to really determine what's going on with grand jury and how that's going to work. I believe and I think when the judges selected me to do this position, maybe I'll state it differently than when I was selected, but that my position impacts the community just as much as anyone else's, including those individuals that come into our court buildings and that deal with our judges every single day. So we are a community as one. While I'm new to the area, the impacts of individuals being for civil cases or criminal cases, as well as the attorneys that come into the court, the partnerships that we build every single day, all plays a circular motion of how things change society and how we move forward as a culture and as a society as well. So, it's a little bit about me. I'll get off my pedestal and kind of give you the bullet points here of what I know so far in my infancy of being the trial court administrator and what I actually do. So, yes, Judge?
Why don't you tell us how long you've been in our area and how long you've been working as the trial court administrator for this, and I should have introduced you better.
That's right.
Could you use your phone?
Yeah, yeah, I shouldn't, shouldn't get up. Make him get up. So I have been, I landed in Coosin-Curry counties on March 4th, 2017. So I was offered a position on Christmas Eve as a trial court administrator. My wife and I flew out here for an interview in middle of December. I was graciously selected and offered this position for, to be the trial court administrator. I took my first day on the job on March 6th. So I have been the trial court administrator for Coosin-Curry county since March 6th of 2017. Prior to that, I was an associate director for a common police court, local jurisdictional court in Ohio, just north of Cincinnati, population of about a quarter of a million people. We had six judges there, five, six judges there that dealt either with large civil, criminal, domestic relations or juvenile matters. Someone's taking control of that, I think.
It, it just has a hard time holding when there's a large file in operation.
So, it's all right. So we dealt locally, we were run, our, my budget came from the county, so regularly I got the opportunity to speak to our county commissioners. So it was a change coming to state courts for me for that perspective, because now I'm working for a state agency. It was also a pleasant surprise because I also get to continue to work with those stakeholders that I know have huge amounts and immense responsibility in the local community. So I think it's a unique position to be in, to be working for a state agency within a county and a community and have those variable levels of contact to the degree in which I have. So I spent seven years at the local county level in supervisory management roles and prior to that, I spent three years working in the local treatment inpatient facility as a supervisor. One as a case manager, working with drug and alcoholics that were all felony convicted males, 110-bed lockdown secure facility. And then two years as a security supervisor, running all the courts, all the security in the building, 365 days a year, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 18, 20 staff and all the things that come with accreditation processes. So that was a good experience, something that I would, again, I'm grateful for, for that local nonprofit to give me an opportunity for. We were all. We were all grant-funded at that time. Yes, sir?
I keep interrupting, and I apologize, but I accidentally skipped over one of my slides, but I think you might be more well-suited to address what I was going to address, which is the relationship between the county and the state courts and our facility and security.
Yeah, so...
Oh.
Oh, he doesn't want that.
Thank you, but I'm done.
You'll have to repeat the question, though.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. No, I mean, either you or Thomas might as the speaker. Mr. Langford, sorry.
Do a microphone check. Just a real quick one. So, the judge asked about the relationship between state courts in the county and in terms, as well, in relationship to court security and functionality of that. I've had the privilege in Curry to work so far with the county accountant, who's presently in the room, in terms of our court security funds. State courts receive court security money that's associated and then dispersed back to the county to maintain those funds. Those funds can be used statutorily for a couple of different purposes. They can be used for some court security upgrades, some equipment and training for the sheriff's department. We've used them for Polycom technology, which are the cameras that you'll see in some rooms that dial in and you can have face conferences and visual conferences with individuals. I've also had the privilege to work with the county attorney, John, on local ordinances that we're looking to get filed with state courts, because there's not the ability to file those at this time. So, we're looking at those ordinances right now in the filing process.
Could I... So, what he's talking about for the Board of Commissioners is our code enforcement activities. The signals are very strong from the board that you want the county staff to start pursuing code enforcement. The remedy for that or the process for that is to, one of the processes is to file a case into circuit court, and everything is digitized and electronic nowadays. And there are state court and all the state statutes are there, but our code is not in their electronic system. And so, we've been working with Thomas Langford and his staff on getting the numbers of our codes for them to put in, so when we file something electronically, the code will be electronically in their system and it will process hopefully smoothly like the state process. We're trying to follow, we're trying to fit our work into their existing processes, and so that's a function of our meetings so far. And then also how we get paid after, at the end of it. We're trying to work on that, too.
It has its own unique challenges, right? I think as we've discovered. So, the court security process, we've been able to assist and partner with the county on some projects in terms of court security upgrades for our courtrooms and cover some of those costs in upgrades of upgrading our judge's bench area and providing some secure paneling that would typically would fall on the county to replace and upgrade, so we've been able to absorb some of those costs. In Coos, we've upgraded some of the doors and provided more secure door access out of court security funds, which are separate from Curry's. I get the unique challenge that I get to work with commissioners in both counties, sheriffs in both counties, and kind of juggle that hat and figure those processes out. I've been thankful and lucky that all the individuals thus far have been wonderful to work with. That could always change. So, I think that may answer the judge's question in terms of court security roughly.
Who says you can't train a judge?
This is very important.
So, the other thing that I was going to talk about was just, I think you're already aware of how court facilities are provided in the state of Oregon for state courts. State courts are state courts. They're not county courts, although this is the circuit court for the county of Curry here. Generally, what happens with court facilities is that the county within which a state court is facilitated provides the courthouse facility and security, which the sheriff provides. So, the county has always, in our county and elsewhere, as far as I know, had that responsibility to provide the location for the courts, a suitable location for the courts, and to provide the maintenance and security. And the state court attempts to work with the counties, and in some instances, we've been able to provide some funding to assist the county in providing our place to do business. For example, the state courts provided some funding to repair the courthouse roof recently. Some of the security upgrades that were discussed, some funding was provided for that. But other things are unfortunately left to the county to deal with in terms of providing that facility and the security for the facility. I think you're already all aware of that, but that's something that I thought should be part of the presentation as well. Thank you.
So, it is an interesting dynamic. I come from, I'm not going to do a microphone check on that one. I come from a court that had court security, had sheriff's deputies that supervised the building, as well as inmates at all times and transported those inmates to and from. The entire building was secure. There was one point of entrance and exit. So, we currently don't have that and probably, you know, again, I'm not going to get into funding and resources, but the services of the sheriff's department does supply us currently, are things that we're extremely grateful for that we have right now. But it does present some unique challenges that I'm not familiar with, and we're walking through and figuring out as the process moves and looking at different options of how we can do things differently and changing some things as we go and process through. Currently, in Coos County, we're looking at how we can secure more of the doors in the court building and the main building in Kokea. So, there's nine points of entrance to that building. So, obviously, this is not a Coos County meeting, but as part of that hat that I wear, those are things we have to look at and consider, and the general public is accessing those buildings and the safety as well for the general public, because individuals may come in for a wide variety of reasons, and ensuring that everyone stays secure in today's time and ages, something that should be on everyone's mind and be cognizant of. Yes, sir?
Just briefly, Mr. Langford, anything in Coos County that we can benefit from and accelerate and get the word out that we're well-protected? I think we'd be very wise to do that. So, yeah, I'm interested in hearing anything now or down the road that you, well, no, not in detail now, but down the road, what, so that, so that, that word is out.
I appreciate that, and as we kind of progress through there, I'll be bringing some information this direction, so we can try to keep things. The plan is to continue to have things be as uniform as possible with, obviously, there being local limitations of those variables as well. So, as things progress here or there, we're going to try to mesh those together as well as we can. So, some brief information about what I do every single day as a trial court administrator, which most people don't understand. I think when I tell them, you know, I'm the trial court administrator, the first thing they do, and they look at me and they say, "Well, what does that mean? What do you do?" And it's, you know, this broad spectrum of many different variables that changes every single day. I do everything from working with state officials to putting out fires with direct staff, is in a nutshell, and that could change every single day. So, I manage all the nonjudicial business for the court. So, everyone outside of the judges, so all the staff that are currently within the state court system in Coos and Curry County, I am responsible for. So, that would include all the personnel management, the fiscal responsibilities for the 15th Judicial District, the policy development implementation, so any policy, local policy or business practice changes that staff have to do every single day, and coordinating and implementing any legislative activities or agendas that may be occurring. So, I have to kind of keep tabs of what's going on at the state level, but understand what's going on at the local level and the local needs of attorneys that are filing motions or the DA's office that are filing motions, along with anything that's going on with the bench that I need to be aware of to integrate into daily operations to ensure that everything runs smoothly. So, I think as the judge mentioned, there are six appointed trial court judges. There's three in Kokea, one judge in North Bend, and two in Curry. He talked about the general jurisdiction court, so I'm not going to hit on that. So, in all three locations, we have about 14,000 new case filings annually in Coos and about 5,000 new case filings annually in Curry. Again, those are about numbers. They fluctuate up and down, but it kind of gives you an idea of how that looks. About 63,000 people roughly live in Coos County and about 22,000 people roughly live in Curry. And in those locations, there are 27 staff in Coos, and we have nine staff in the Gold Beach location. Questions about that? A little touchy mouse, you're right, Your Honor. So, some of my primary duties are obviously supporting the bench, including the rule of law, ensuring consistent operations and access for the public, so ensuring that the public can come into the court and get the services that they need. And to me, the public, as well as the community, encompasses a lot of individuals that are highly important and structured in order for the court to run, ensuring items such as judicial independence and equal protection and regular use of resources and efficiency occur. So, it says a whole lot about what may occur, and there's a whole lot of words in there. Getting from point A to point B and doing it smoothly is really one of my primary duties in working with my staff. So, everything from the law enforcement officer bringing in a citation for a traffic violation to a civil attorney or individual community member filing a motion with the court or an entry with the court to get a case started. So, we want to ensure those are smooth transitions and smooth processes for everyone. So, one interesting thing that I put in this presentation are pro se matters. So, coming from the state of Ohio, we didn't have a lot of pro se cases and pro se for individuals that don't understand what that may be, are individuals representing themselves. Really, they'd like to put a nice fancy word on it. So, in Ohio, we didn't have a lot of pro se cases. We didn't have this occur a ton. So, I ran all the statistics that you're seeing from January until May, and there's some statistics that stopped in April, because we're still in the month of May, so some of the reports that we have can't push out data yet. So, in Curry County, we had 35 family filings in that time period. 11% of those filings retained attorneys, and 89% of those were pro se matters, so individuals that felt they could represent themselves in a family matter. We had 104 civil filings, and you can kind of see the difference between the civil cases and those family matter cases, where 99% of those cases had an attorney represent those individuals, and only 1% had pro se matters. So, kind of a difference in the case types, a difference in those representation needs of individuals. And locally, at a local level, most of those attorneys are being retained locally. Not a lot of those small civil cases, you're going to bring a big attorney from somewhere else to represent somebody. So, case filing data is all the cases that have been filed with the court. So, this kind of gives a representation of the workload that is seen by those 36 staff members that flows through the court, that staff have to deal with every single day that gets processed and eventually ends up in front of a judge to move forward in the process. So, we had a total, this data includes down at the bottom, any pending case as of 1/1/17. So, the pending case and then any new filings that occurred every single month. So, we're taking a snapshot of what exists in January and then any new filing that occurs thereon after. So, we had 2,272 new criminal filings. We had 461 civil filings, 250 family filings, and then just over 3,000 probate and mental health filings.
So, even, even though your judicial...
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, even though the judicial district is Coos and Curry, this is solely Curry.
This is just Curry's data.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
For four months.
Four months. And some of these, understand, like I said, I took a snapshot of what was pending prior to January 1st. So, some of these were pending cases, and I think as the judge explains, we try to get cases completed in a year. So, some of these could be, on the criminal side, could be cases that have been ongoing cases that had a filing and are still waiting for resolution, or it's filings on a case for, just for the staff to process. So, this isn't actual total cases, but this is filings in terms of quantifying how much work processes into our office every single day.
I think another way to put that would be that this isn't the number of cases that were filed during that time period. It's a snap, again, a snapshot of the number of cases that were pending or had been filed during that time. Each day, some cases are closed and some cases are opened, and so that number changes each day. There could be a different report that would show just the number of cases that were filed or a report that could show just the number of cases that are closed, and while this shows volume, volume is not always representative of the amount of work that I have to do or that the staff has to do.
This for, I guess, almost for both of you, because Judge Margulies, when you put your presentation on earlier, you had some statistics. I don't recall what they were. They weren't four, three times what those totals are, for sure.
So, that was a little bit different report, and it was from 2014. I did indicate that those were older numbers and that Mr. Langford would present newer numbers. I don't know also why this says 3,202. I haven't, I haven't seen this slide before, but I don't think we had that many cases of that variety open or filed during that time.
I think this is pulling filings in the case, so any time a document comes in.
Okay, so that might explain it. So, a case is a type, you can have a petition or a complaint filed that opens a case. So, with these, that would include apparently not just, not just the new case being filed, but each time a motion is filed or some other document is filed that generally has to be addressed by the court, and so that explains why.
You're looking at, you're looking at a workload per case volume to kind of more explain it. So, the amount of time staff has to touch and process through paperwork, they're processing through 3,000 documents potentially, and it could be multi-page documents on those kind of cases. So, it kind of gives you a clear snapshot of workload-wise, how that workload is split out for the staff that are being supervised.
Question, Mr. Chair, and, you know, to me, it's still been recent, but the court has changed from a paper filing system now. It used to be primarily paper filing, and now it seems like we're primarily, if not exclusively, electronic filing. And are these statistics, you know, generated from some function of an electronic filing program or software service or something?
They are. So, about a year ago, state courts in Coos and Curry went to a new case management system through Tyler Technologies. The program's called Odyssey. So, we're still weeding through some data. We're also just getting in the process of running really good reports and getting some output. So, I think counsel asked a question about pulling statistics for increase of filings or charges of case statuses based on drug use previously. So, looking at that information as we move forward are things that, you know, the state will be looking at and the court will be looking at.
I just wonder if other filters will be available for...
They will be.
Yeah, processing the data, sure.
So, I used to say in Ohio, if the data is there, if the stuff's there, somebody can figure out a way to pull it out. Who that somebody is is sometimes several questions and some dollars later. But the data's being put in on a lot of cases, so we're starting to now filter and pull data out and clean that data up to where it's really clean and manageable.
Now, is this a newer, you mentioned, you know, I'm getting the impression this is a newer software technology, because you mentioned Tyler Technologies, which...
Tyler's been around for many years. The state went to Tyler as an entire state just over a year ago, so they've been processing, they went live in the system a year ago. I think they started the conversations probably three years prior to that. It's a process to transfer. They used to have a computer system called Ogen. The entire state's in the same database now through Tyler Technologies and everyone's data, so you can view cases. data is, so you can view cases and pull data up as needed. So it's newer in terms of what we're using. The program isn't the latest and greatest, you know, just got developed yesterday program. The program's been around for a while and it's being updated and upgraded and processed So ongoing coordination and that I do every single day and that continuously goes on. And I think I, you know, mentioned it some with counsel and the, working with the county accountant and working with the county accountant down in Coos. But typically on an ongoing basis, I'm not just responsible and need to work with the staff and the judges every single day, but I need to coordinate with all the stakeholders in the community that impact what state courts, what we do. So that's everyone from the sheriff's department to local law enforcement, to the probation and parole agencies. So meeting with Sergeant Hensley and meeting with the director of parole and probation, Mike Krimm in Coos County, and having those contacts and meeting with the local sheriffs and building those relationships helps to impact other variables that we have to deal with every single dime and build those lines of communication. So ongoing inter-agency development and understanding is one of my primary goals as I integrate into Coos and Curry and become part of the community and also begin to build some of those relationships, target some of the things that may be lacking and look at how we can maybe approach things from a different manner, approach mental health services for maybe a way that it hasn't been approached in the past. It'd be beautiful to build a jail that could house 1,000 people, right? But we had a sheriff in Ohio that built a huge jail. And if you build it, you'll fill it. And are you really having a positive impact on the community? So I think the judge hit the nail directly on the head by speaking about looking at individuals and sentencing appropriately based on community safety. And as we look at availability, the need for continued availability or increase or decrease of that availability, is balancing that with what the community needs and what we're seeing coming, coming through the court, what local law enforcement's seeing, what the hospital is seeing as individuals coming into those facilities that are needing those ongoing services, and then looking at what we need to target to ensure as a community we're growing and dealing with those within our community the best way that we can. Sometimes that's with jails, sometimes that's with additional services. Sometimes those services aren't there and those are hard conversations that we need to begin to start having or look at how to have and begin to move that ball forward. And things that I'm going to be looking at in the coming months and years to come as we move forward and change and continue to grow. Questions for me, outside of Mike checking this mic and breaking it? No. Thank you, guys, I think everyone for being here.
Thanks.
And those that I've already gotten to work with, it's been thus far wonderful and I continue to look for it to grow.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks to both.
Does anybody, while they're still here, have any other questions or comments or... Tom, Judge Margolis, thank you very, very much. Very, very helpful, very informative, very informative. Okay, with that said, we will adjourn this workshop at 3:06 PM.